Today is Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. This is the Bluff Town Council Regular Meeting Minute, the regular meeting, roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Jim Sayers.
Luann Hook.
Brand Murray.
Ann Lepinon.
Erin Nelson, serving as Town Manager.
So I have a question for the Town Manager. How many people raised their hand to make a public comment?
I saw two.
I was going to ask the whole public comment till the very end because I wanted to get Amanda Podmore on and off the meeting, but given that we're talking about just two public comments, let's go ahead and take those as we usually do. Then Erin, do you want to handle that?
Couldn't.
Do you want to do the meeting minute approval first?
Wait, do I? No, I want to go to public comment first.
Public comment first. Okay. The randomized order would be Linda Sosa had her hand raised or the computers' hand raised?
Yes, okay.
Okay, obviously, I am not Linda Sosa. The door was locked, so I had to come in the back. This is Ceele McDermott, and I have both a concern and a request. Are you ready for me? Yes, go ahead. Okay. I want to know, does Bluff have a disaster or evacuation plan for the town should the need arise? If we do, could we please make it public? And if we don't, then why not? My concern is that as a one-road town, we're very highly vulnerable to fire, flood, anything. And I just need to know, and I think the town needs to know, if we have a plan. That's it. Normally, we would not comment on that, but I'm going to go ahead and break that rule. Yes, we do have a plan. Chief Lot and I worked on it two years ago. It dovetails into San Juan County's plan, which is in the process of merging the two, and Chief Lot is working on it. The hope would be that we'd roll it out early in the fall, hopefully before the eclipse, because that's part of what we'll be relying on. But yes, we do have one. It's an emergency operation plan. And you will be making it available to all the residents? It will be made available as soon as it's finalized, yes, we will. All right. Is that the end of the comment? Yes, it is. Thank you. You're welcome.
Almer Tumay was the second comment this evening.
Thank you. I was just wondering if I can get a copy of the draft aviation ordinance. Please.
I guess it's my night to respond. Mr. Tumay, I did respond to your email as soon as I saw it, and yes, you will, you can have a copy of it. I've asked Erin when we're done to put it up on the website as a draft.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. If that closes the public comment, we'll move to the approval of the Bluff Town Council Public Hearing Minutes of August 15th, 2023. Did everyone receive them? Did you review them? And are there any changes or modifications?
Mayor, I'll move to accept those as presented.
Second, is that for both or for one?
Just one, but I can include both. I'll be happy to do that. Listen, you want to do them individually, Mayor? All right.
So August 15th, Jim.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then approval of August 22nd, 2023, Town of Bluff Regular Meeting Minutes. Has everyone received those? Have you reviewed them? Are there any changes? Any modifications?
I must you approve those as presented also, Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. So the number one on the unfinished business is discussion and reminder of the Fort's Pancake Breakfast fundraiser on Saturday, September 9th, 2023, for the Bluff Volunteer Fire Department. And Erin and I have been working with them mostly, Erin has. So Erin, if you'd like to do the update and kind of the reminder?
You know, I don't have too much else. The flyers are out. We sincerely appreciate the Fort for hosting this event yet again. For this year, all the proceeds are going to go to the Volunteer Fire Department. They went to EMS last year, and we're very appreciated. The fundraiser will be from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, August 9th, and it will be at the Bluff Fort Pavilion, so where they've hosted it outside before. Unless there are any questions, I just encourage everyone to come, show up. Council members, your attendance and help in passing out food would be greatly appreciated. But I can, we can definitely coordinate offline, but if you are available for any period of time, it would, I know it would be very much appreciated by the Fort and by our citizens.
Lou?
I just, I think you said August, but just for traditional year-to-year, what they do is the Saturday right before 9/11, as sort of a tribute to firefighters. So it's this coming Saturday.
And so what would also be really helpful is Craig Miller at the Fort has said he'd appreciate volunteers between 6:45 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. It's our responsibility to set up tables, chairs, do whatever the Fort needs to have us do, as well as to serve, and cover the cash box, ticketing and all of that. So I'll be doing the cash box again. Assuming that we have everybody on board, we should have a great turnout. So thanks. All right. If there's nothing further on that, number two, discussion and reminder of the Bluff Town Council's election process up to and on November 21st, 2023. Erin, do you have anything further or new to add to this date?
The only thing that I was going to mention, and I'm trying to pull it up now, I'm still finalizing the ballot box with Lyman Duncan. The intention and what I last heard, so, and of course, you know, we will get this out, we will get it posted on the website, and people will know, what I last heard is that we're supposed to have the ballot box from Monday, October 23rd, through Monday, November 20th. Then on Tuesday, November 21st, the county will send two people down to have a voting machine, and so voting can happen in person. They're also going to be having in-person voting a few times over the course of the period that we actually have the ballot box, is what I'm hearing, for early voting, but that has not been confirmed. So there has been slightly better communication, but I just want to make sure that we have everything absolutely nailed down before we post anything on the website. But the intention is to have the ballot box available as well as in-person voting on Tuesday, November 21st. Again, this is pushed back because of the statewide changes in the election process.
Brand, did you have a question?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Erin. Last year, when we talked to Lyman, he mentioned installing a permanent ballot box in our offices, and I would like to do that. That way, we won't have to have an installation each year. We could activate it and cover it. So Erin, if you think about that, we're talking to him, maybe raise that question, please.
Okay. So when Utah decided to change some of this election, the election dates in the process, they made a number of changes. And Brand, that's not possible. Their videotaping installations and removals were under a Department of Justice watch once again in the ACLU because of some irregularities that have occurred over the past couple of years. We have no control over how those boxes come in or go out, nor do we want to at this point because of the videotaping and all the stuff that has to be done for them to keep track of these boxes. The can't seem to be all, go ahead, Erin.
I was going to say, it's important to note, though, that when that ballot box is available to the public for drop-off, we'll have to have someone watching it from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. daily for that entire month. So there are certainly going to be days in which I will not be available to do that, but I just need, you know, we're going to get it out early, that that's an FYI.
Right. And there will, there should be, according to Lyman Duncan, four additional in-person voting days. Erin's correct, and I'm sure that they have not nailed those down. It's been a little chaotic, I think, with the moving targets we've got right now. But yes, it'll be similar to before. We have to have somebody sitting there during that entire timeframe. I'm still working on the details for the canvassing, but it looks like there's a window of time, so many days after the election, so many days within a timeframe. So we'll get that out hopefully in the next meeting. And then, because none of us have been trained in canvassing, that's the question I have next week for San Juan County, is who trains us? Erin, you looked at training materials, and there's not much out there, is there?
No, I looked on the state elections website, and I'm not seeing much. So we will definitely need specific direction, but I believe, as Ann has mentioned, it seems to be elected officials are those that canvass, and it will probably need to take place in Monticello, since that's where the ballots would head to.
So I'll put that back on the agenda in the next meeting or two, but hopefully we'll get that leveled out. Then if there's nothing further on the election, number three, call for volunteers and update on the annual or solar eclipse committees. Erin's got the big picture going, so I'll turn this back over to Erin.
So as you all know, this is something the subcommittee has been meeting on really regularly to ensure that we are as prepared as we can be for quite a lot of visitors to our region. I think my biggest ask today is that if you yourself are interested in volunteering, you know someone who's interested in volunteering, or if you could just get the word out, we really need volunteers leading up to, as well as after the eclipse, including, of course, the day of. So we'll have, you know, some materials and need to set up some road blockades, which will be finalized by you all, probably on like the Tuesday or Wednesday prior to the eclipse. And then, of course, on the day of the eclipse, we will need assistance with vendor sites and, you know, ensuring that, you know, road closures are observed. So if you're interested in volunteering a portion of your time, please reach out. You can email me directly, manager@townofbluff.org, and we are just going to continue to ask for volunteers. Another big thing, and the subcommittee started talking about this, but we're hyper-focused on kind of the after as well, and, you know, ensuring that we have trash cleanup. So more to come on that, but we definitely just need man and woman power in order to ensure that we do the best we can for our residents and our visitors. The committee is continuing to meet regularly, and we are finalizing the list of expenditures that we'll need, and so that can probably come before the council as the advisory committee of things that we would like to see in order to make this go as smoothly as possible. But really, the big call, volunteers are desperately needed. So please, please let me know if you have any availability that we can, it would be appreciated.
If there are no questions, then if Amanda Podmore is on, why don't we move number eight up?
Hi there, I am on.
Great. Amanda, why don't I just turn this over to you? Sorry for kind of getting this out of order tonight.
No problem at all. Thanks, everybody. This is Amanda Podmore, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I was going to give a report on the draft RV, sorry, draft aviation ordinance that was received last week from the town lawyer. I'm hoping to first just go over briefly what it's, like a summary of what it says. Second, share how that differs from the recommendation from planning and zoning. And then, three, open that up to questions or kind of next steps. So if you wouldn't mind just holding your questions to the end. So it's a four-page draft from Chris. You'll notice as you read it that it does have a couple typos, and it refers to the airport, refers to the airstrip as an airport, so there are a couple changes that need to happen. But generally speaking, the draft ordinance is, for commercial aviation, is more specific, is more narrow than what planning and zoning had recommended to the town council based on what we heard from public comment. Generally, the ordinance encourages any commercial or recreational aviation to occur at the town airstrip, and if the town determines that that is not possible at the airstrip, it recommends a conditional use permit process be developed for any, like landing and takeoff that would be allowed. And it restricts that, a conditional use permit process to zones A1 and A2. Just noting that A1 is the area in town that we've, is zoned to be undeveloped, like a town park or something. A2 is more agricultural land. A3 is like more recreational open space. So when the Planning and Zoning Commission met in a work session last Monday, we disagreed with the idea of A1 being suitable for aviation, just putting that out there. The ordinance essentially applies to fixed wing and rotary, rotary-type, rotary-wing aircrafts. It does require, if this conditional use process would go forward, that would allow for commercial aviation to happen on particular agricultural zones. It does lay out, like, site plan requirements that would need to be followed by an applicant. The site plan requirements include the town, like, being able to say, you know, the number of flights per month, hours a day, that sort of stuff would allow to be, would be regulated in the conditional use process. Outlines the review process in which, like, an application first comes to planning and zoning, then it goes to town council. And then it does require that any aviation facility be at least, and the numbers are different in here, either 1,200 feet or 2,000 feet away from what is considered a noise-sensitive land use. So examples of noise-sensitive land use are outlined in the ordinance, like residential uses, schools, lodging facilities, cultural facilities example. So any aviation facility would have to be 1,200 to 2,000 feet away from those, there's just discrepancy in the numbers here. And lastly, the ordinance exempts, from any of the regulations in it, hot air balloons and emergency aviation, so for medical or search and rescue. So that obviously is something that was really important that we heard very loudly during the public comment process. As I said, this ordinance is more narrow than the town, than the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended. It really just focuses on a solution for where to put commercial aviation within the town. The planning and zoning was trying to look at bigger picture, like, can commercial aviation happen? Where can, like, what types of residential aviation can happen? For example, can you fly your drone in your backyard? And three, where can recreational aviation happen more generally? Like, where can people fly a little aircraft, we see flying through town? And we had proposed more of a zoning overlay, where certain, certain types of use would be allowed in different zones. This, as written by Chris, is narrower, but it's also simpler, so there's benefits to that. We had recommended that hot air balloons be allowed in the Town of Bluff, so that is aligned with this one. Couple other similarities. We did want to address drones. This ordinance has not addressed drones, so I think the planning and zoning would recommend that that be addressed at some point in time, if not during this. But generally speaking, we only had about half an hour to review in a work session, so we are interested in having potentially a joint work session with town council, so we can look at this ordinance together and see what, what changes might need to be made to it. So I was hoping we could maybe see if there was a time early next week for a, for a work session. I haven't run dates by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but maybe Tuesday morning would work. Right, I talked a lot, but open it up to questions, concerns, ideas for next steps or work session from the town council.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Does not all aviation include drones, then? Fixed wing and rotary blade? Would drones do not fit within those categories?
It defines, it uses the term aircraft, and then narrowly defines aircraft to mean fixed-wing airplanes or rotary-wing helicopters, so it doesn't apply to drones or other types of, say, unmanned, like motorized airplanes or things like that.
So it does specify for aircraft that they have to be, have someone in them? Because if it doesn't, it would include their drones, right?
I guess, yeah. Oh, yeah, it says used for transportation of people or cargo. Yeah.
Okay. A little ambiguous there. Thank you.
So questions from the council?
It's like Brand has his hand raised.
I do have my hand up, yeah. I look forward to us working together on that, Amanda. Thank you for getting that started, a joint meeting, that thing would, would work out well.
So would Tuesday, the 12th, work for everyone on the council in the morning, assuming planning and zoning can make it work? And then I'll go to Erin, if everybody can just weigh in.
That works for me.
Is there a time, Lou, that works best?
That middle of the morning, 10:30, is, is a nice one.
So Amanda, if you can, if it fits in your schedule, then if you can run it through planning and zoning. And Erin, you had your hand up?
I just have an administrative question. So it's been requested that that draft be shared on the town website. Amanda, have there been any changes to the draft that are different than what's on your shared drive right now?
No, thank you for clarifying that. We just received it as a PDF, so we haven't edited it in any way. And, yeah, only spent half on it, so.
And this is really the time to emphasize, this is a draft. The council hasn't had an opportunity to go through it and look at it closely either, and that's why Amanda and I talked, and Amanda's suggestion that we handle this a couple different ways, and we came up with probably the joint work session's the best way to do it, so that we can keep this moving. Any other questions for Amanda? And again, it's a draft. I want to emphasize, draft, draft, draft.
When we put it on the website, just have that on there.
And is 10:30 working for everybody else? I don't need to be the one setting the time, but.
I'm not at home, and I can't see my calendar, but I think it does.
I'll check with the Planning and Zoning Commission ASAP to see.
So if there's something that really would limit it to just you, Amanda, or one other person, why don't you let me know, and I'll go back and sort out some dates with everyone.
Okay, sounds great.
Thanks, Amanda. I know we're cut into your other stuff, so thank you very much for indulging us tonight.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Yeah, I got to hop off for a call. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
All right.
Thanks.
Then, number four is update on Design Review Committee for the Cooperative Cultural Center and the grant possibilities. And then a second part of it is discussion and vote to share 50/50 with UDB, with Utah Deneby-K, the cost of fire suppression and the ceiling tile removal. Jim, do you want to take that?
Yeah. We had a meeting today, and last week, I believe it was last week, Erin and I, and the bidder for the ceiling demolition really looked at this ceiling carefully, and it isn't what we thought it was. It's a heavier-duty ceiling. It has double drywall layers. We thought it was a simple suspended tile ceiling. It seems to have a framework behind it, a wooden framework, and it's suspending double layers of drywall, which is a significant amount of material to remove. It probably quadruples the amount of material that would be removed over a simple suspended ceiling, which is in the east, two far-east rooms, but the rest of the hallway and the other rooms are this, appear to be this double drywall layers sandwiched. So we, of course, the bidder at that point was, thought that wasn't really what he thought it had been, so he's withdrawn, I believe. You can check with Erin, but we were going to withdraw the bid and redo it anyway, but the real question was for the DRC today, and that's what we exclusively talked about. Everything else, there was no report. We only talked about this ceiling and this new information. And the real question was, with this much more work and expense, and we're not sure how much that is yet, but it, you know, it's more, and do we still want to remove the ceiling, or do we want to leave the ceiling as is? And the consensus from the DRC, and I, I'm part of that, I believe this too, is that that ceiling is pretty trashy and it needs to go out. And, and we probably have the money dedicated to that project to work with, so I think we could do it. So that's the upshot of the meeting today, and they were both in agreement on that. Nothing else to really report from that. What else do we have here? We've got the grant possibilities. We, as far as I know, we have no new grant possibilities that I'm aware of, so everything is kind of going along swimmingly with the grants that we have so far. No deadlines are looming, and, and I think that there's a signature I have to provide for USDA for, in place of you, Mayor. This meeting will be eight hours of meetings for me today, so I'm kind of not, I haven't signed that yet, but I will. And I think that's the report on the DRC. Did you want to move to the second part of that, or do you have any questions?
So I'll let Lou ask her question in a second. That signature on the USDA grant, we have a hard deadline of tomorrow at 5:00. I love the fact that they took over a year, and we just received notice the end of last week, but now they want it signed off on by tomorrow at the end of the date. If you can't get to it, Jim, would you text me right away? And since I'm in Salt Lake City and the office is here, I'll take a break and go over, but the electronic signing was not in place for me to be able to do.
So I'd go over and do that at Erin's, at the office?
Erin's also in Salt Lake City.
And so how am I going to sign, what am I going to sign here?
I forwarded all the documents to you.
Okay, all right.
So let me know if you didn't get them, and I'll either resend them, or I'll take a break and go over to USDA, which would not be my preference for a number of reasons tomorrow. But let me know.
We're good.
But let me know.
We're good.
And then Lou, did you have a question or something?
Yeah, two things. Steve, if you have problems, you know, signing it and scanning it back in or whatever, just holler tomorrow.
It should be electronic, and I may be okay on that. I'll check it out, I'll see whatever she sent me. Thank you for that.
Okay, yeah, but if you have to, you know, if you have to print. And then what I was going to say is, on that fire suppression, it's discouraging that there's that much ceiling in there, and you all are in there the most to decide what needs to be done. But when we got the fire suppression quotes, it was a lot more to put the fire suppression up inside.
Up the ceiling.
Yeah, and so that has to be considered in how much this all costs, too, that that wasn't really a cheap option either, so.
No, that, right off the top of my head, that was around $800,000, and that didn't include the demolition of the ceiling if we went with option A, which was to do it the other way. And now with inflation, we're probably closer to a million, so, yeah.
Yeah. And by the way, all that wiring, 90% of that wiring that we see that's so confusing up there is comms and computer wiring, and it would just go. It's very low voltage, if any voltage at all, and so most of that, those bundles of wiring are going to be eliminated. That's another part of the project, I believe.
So was the DRC, do you all have a very specific scope of work now that we can utilize in order to receive more estimates or bids, or however we need to get this out for a competitive process?
Other than a more accurate description of the work that has to be done, that is removal of the sandwiched two layers of drywall and framing, I believe that the bid process would, could go forward, very similar to what it's already done. It's just that whoever bids needs to know what they're up against, so they can bid accurately. The recommendation, by the way, from both Dave and Damian, which we've heard before, is that we go with time and materials instead of a solid contract. But I mentioned that we could go with a contract which had a provision in it for cost overruns in the event of something, you know, I mean, we don't really know what's up there actually, you know, until we get it torn out. So I think that some contracts have that, and there might be people that are more experienced with contracts than I, that could provide that information, just so we don't. So everybody, you know, it's a win-win for both parties, whoever bids and the town.
Well, I apologize for not being on the DRC today. I was also in travel. Perhaps I can speak with the DRC next week, and we can hammer out what would be most appropriate, whether it just be time and materials, since we're having a hard time getting that full scope of work in one bid process. But let's, if you're planning to have a meeting next week.
Yeah.
We can get that hammered out and then bring back to the council when all that gets done.
Sure.
I think that Erin has also raised a good point in the past week or so with this bidding, is that if we were to be so fortunate as to get that million dollar grant that's sitting out there and should be determined in the next few weeks, that will provide for an engineer who can actually go in and do a full scope of work of all the engineering. And that's really what we need. I mean, we're, everybody's putting a lot of work into what we need, but every time we go in, we find more. And it would be nice if we could bring an engineer and have somebody actually look at it and tell us professionally what to do. Not that you and Dave and Damian aren't experts, but maybe.
Well, you're exactly right. And we have limited funds at this point. As soon as we have more funds, we're going to be fine. But I just want to point out that I think that this, I don't see this project as taking, costing more than $8 per square foot, which brings us pretty close to what we're getting from the state in that 80 grand. So $8 a square foot for removal is the high dollar for removals of these ceilings, I believe. It's a lot of, it's a fair amount of money, and I think we've got about 10,000 square feet, so it's a big job, but we'll just see.
So moving to the second part of this, excuse me. Looking at the ceiling and the amount of work that we need to do for fire suppression and demolition, it became daunting to try to figure out the square footage that UDB would be taking and that we would be taking and doing it down to the exact percentage. So I would like to recommend that we amend our inter-agency or our inter-local agreement with UDB to reflect that for the demolition of the ceiling and the fire suppression, we just do a 50/50 split. There's so much common space and closet space.
Yeah.
That it, we'll spend more time, I think, trying to parcel this out when we haven't even decided with cert you which entity is getting which room and which, where the entries will be and everything. So that's a long version of the motion. I'd like to move to amend our agreement with UDB to 50/50 on those two items only.
So moved. I'm excited to get some forward motion on this, so that's great.
Can I ask a question on that motion? What does that mean, 50/50? I mean, we're going to be paying out of, I believe, grants that we have received, correct?
Correct.
And you're asking them to pay separately out of their own funds, 50/50?
So when you do the allocation, what we've been doing for everything is two-third, one-third?
Right.
So this would be no different, it just changes the percentage, because each ceiling we'd have to go through and calculate with certainty who was going to be taking that room, whether it was a ceiling that had to be removed, et cetera. And it just seems cleaner to do that. I thought we talked about this at the DRC a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, and I apologize that I thought it was a simpler idea than I now am thinking it might be. So my question again is, so we pay, what are they paying their 50% out of, their own funds or the funds that we have obtained on the partnership's behalf?
Here's what I thought. We'd take the funds we have, pay that, and then split the balance between us equally. That was what my motion intended to make. If that's wrong, then we need to correct that.
Okay, so I made the motion, I'm withdrawing the motion and sending it back to the DRC to sort this out.
Well, I can't, I mean, what, what does it mean, is what I'm asking?
Go back through the agreement we signed, the acquisition redevelopment, and it spells out the one-third, two-thirds. I was suggesting we substitute for these two projects 50/50. It doesn't change any of the acquisition and redevelopment terms. But let's pull it out and talk about it at the next DRC, so that everyone's on the same page.
Thank you.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. I apologize for being so obtuse.
All right, so the motion's withdrawn. We can move on to the next, which is number six, update on bid for the remodel of Bluff Community Center building. And Erin, I'll toss that one to you.
All righty. So for the Bluff Community Center, the bidder, Sam Weldon, or Weldon Contracting, they came back, so we sat down and negotiated, and they are going to donate $7,000 of material and labor to the project. So our out-of-pocket will be $82,050, and then they will donate the remaining $7,000 in order to make the project complete. We had asked, you know, about removing certain items, or not doing tile in the bathrooms, or, you know, just kind of changing the scope of work. But Mr. Weldon was kind enough to just donate those materials and the labor that would go into finishing the bathroom. So we will get our entire project completed. That contract has been signed. You all approved that last time, so, you know, go back to him, see what we can do. Work should start at the end of October, so we'll have to do a little bit of, a little bit of work to clean out our offices. We're going to coordinate with the senior center to ensure that, you know, their day-to-day isn't disrupted too much, because of course, part of the money's coming in are from the insurance when that area flooded. So they're getting a new floor in there as well, which will be very beneficial for the entire public. So I think that is a successful project, signed contract. We're looking forward to getting that complete before the end of the year. And again, the timeframe on that is about six weeks. So any questions from council?
Well, thanks to Weldon Building for doing that. One additional piece is I had completely forgotten in the, okay, the funds, the relief funds, that there was an additional 5% held back. And so now we can apply for that 5%, so we actually have more than exactly what we have in the account. We have another 5% that comes in. So thank you, Erin, for meeting with Sam Weldon and getting that done. Grant?
Mayor, I was just thinking if during that remodel, we could do our outside lights for dark sky compliance on that building. It would be good, I think.
Certainly is well worth talking about. I don't think the, I know that we've had Spencer Wade look at the lights, and there wasn't much of a cost to that. And it might be that I can talk with Malia and Erin about the possibility of getting it done prior to the eclipse, because it would be nice to have that, those lights changed out before we get to the dark sky.
Great idea. Good. All right, sounds good. I just wanted, we got a December 31st deadline, everybody knows that.
All right, then number seven, if there's nothing further. So then, actually, report on Bluff's planning and zoning meetings and work session. Amanda had to jump off. I didn't realize that she had another meeting until tonight, when I talked to her prior to the meeting. And Lou, go ahead.
Okay, yep, they had a meeting August 16th, was their last regularly scheduled meeting. They didn't have any land use clearances, so they used the remainder of the time as a work session. And they were working on the RV plan, RV ordinance, I should say, the site plan application, a few updates to the form. They're aware now that a land use clearance and subdivision applications and those kinds of things have fees attached, if it's a new thing now, and that these are on the town website. They did plan a work session to edit the aviation ordinance, and that's what they did on the first, which I believe was Monday. And that was the one that I was not able to attend, and Amanda gave the update on the aviation part that they worked on, and then they also worked on the RV ordinance. And I believe Erin was there for that section.
Yeah, I listened in to that. They talked about the, they do have kind of tentative draft RV ordinance. There's a lot in it right now, so they're going through kind of point by point and addressing what would be appropriate for Bluff specifically. Two of the commissioners had kind of worked on compiling the information, and now they're going through as a group to determine what would be appropriate. There was a lot of discussion regarding the intent of such an ordinance, you know, in terms of RVs for housing versus RV parks versus storage. And so that's really what they're getting into now, is, you know, what is the intent of the ordinance based on, you know, some of the public comments that had been around and other things that they've heard in their meetings. So definitely not anything finalized there, but there is a working draft, and they're starting the process of going through that.
Thanks you, too.
Their next meeting, I believe, is September 20th. I should write that down. Unless they do a work session between, well, we'll do the works, the joint work session, and then their next regularly scheduled one is the 20th.
And that's one of the reasons Amanda and I talked about getting a work session on right away, because we really can't wait until September 20th, which would mean they hand it back to us, our first meeting in September, or October, rather. So thanks for agreeing to the work session. Then the next is the discussion and vote on a revision of the master fee schedule, which was Resolution 71 to include a fee for partition actions. And I'm not sure if there was any recommended fee for partitions by anybody. Does anybody have a thought on that?
I was thinking $100,000 by the applicant.
Well, we could try that. So the other thing I could do is just, if you want to have a discussion about it, and no one has a firm idea, we could just put this into our joint work session and come up with, looking at what the fee, the fees currently are for like subdivision and all of that, and come up with an amount in that work session with all of us together.
Good idea.
Just a quick note, did you want to circle back to number nine?
So I couldn't print off anything. So read what nine is.
Nine is the letter of inquiry to Norbert Norton from the BLM regarding aviation.
I tried to make notes, but I was moving stuff so much. Thank you for pointing that out. So that's the number nine, which is a letter. Did we get his name correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so just giving us some reference points for us to follow up with Chris McAnany, who had recommended that we get something off to the BLM to ask what the process would be if we wanted to change the use of the airport. And this was the response from the BLM. This was done at the request of our attorney. So I guess the question will be in discussing the big picture of aviation, the aviation ordinance, talking about the lease that we don't have from the BLM, the, on the airport at this point, and looking at the future of the airport. How do we position things? Do we want to talk about changing use? How do we change use? And particularly, if we were to ask for some kind of an exemption from the BLM regarding Bear's Ears Management Plan that hasn't been finalized. So any thoughts, or shall we pull that?
I think we should hold that, Mayor. Seems like we're not, haven't moved far enough to deal with it.
I haven't had a chance to talk with Chris since we received the response, due to his schedule and my schedule, and I doubt that I'll be able to talk to him before next week. So I'll have him look at the response that we got, and I'll talk to him and then bring All right, so then that should take us to 11, which should be under new business, right, Erin? Or anybody? Am I? Okay. All right. Discussion and vote on payment of 2019 and 2021 election costs from San Juan County. So I've been going back and forth for over a year with Mac McDonald, first with Lyman Duncan, then with Mac McDonald, then with Lyman Duncan, then with Mac McDonald. Megan, Diego's was in the mix at some point. But we had received, back in 2019, when we had our election, we did not have a written interlocal agreement with San Juan County to run our election. And I had asked Kelly, no, John David Nielsen, I asked him in an email, what what our approximate election cost would be. And he responded right around $1,000. Then we didn't, we didn't get a bill. We didn't get anything. When John David left and they began picking up pieces, it was discovered that the 2019 and the 2021 bills had never been prepared and sent out. And that resulted in a kind of a flurry in 2022 of a couple of different versions of the primary and the general 2019, the primary and the general 2021. Now, the 2021, Mac McDonald was able to go back because he was the administrator in 2021. He was able to go back and piece out what our, our actual costs were. And if I'm looking, I have to find the right ones that he gave us. It's approximately $1,400 for the primary. And the general was slightly more than, was more than that. Let me just, he, he gave me so many that. One is 1,463 and one is 1,401. And those were 2021 primary and general.
I have a question. Will, will this get, get us caught up to the, to the election we're on by paying those?
Hold on, but yes, so let me go back. 2019 was a mixture of John David Nielsen. I believe David Everett came in as the administrator interim. And then Mac didn't come in in 2019 at all. And the bill was about $4,000 total between the two elections that we ended up with from Lyman Duncan. So after spending hours literally with Mac trying to figure out what the printing costs were, how they were allocated, whether or not anything ever got mailed, fill in the blank. I, I just went back to him and I had Erin in on the meeting. And I just said, you know, what if we pay the 2021 because we've been able to backtrack it? We can see what the, the costs are for 2021. But 2019, I'm offering $1,000. That's what we were told. We were new. You didn't have a written agreement. And $4,000 plus is, is not justifiable. And he agreed. So what we would be voting on would be to pay the 2019 at a thousand for the general and the primary. And then I believe it's right around 2,800, but I'll double check the figures because there were several bills. But to pay what the 2021 actual figures were. That would get us caught up then, Brandt, to this year. And this year we had, we did have a very solid agreement two months ago. Now with the changes in the election, I have to renegotiate the 2023 costs with Mac. But because the first agreement that we signed is not accurate because of the changes by the state.
It's all right with you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to go ahead and pay those past two elections. And thank you for the hard work on this.
Second.
And I'll put together the invoices so everybody can see those 2021 invoices.
14 and a thousand is kind of what I'm saying.
Well, it's, it's a thousand for 2019 and it's more for 2021. But we've got the documentation for 2021. So any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. It's unanimous and I can take that one off that long list. Then next is the vote on local consent for a limited restaurant alcohol license for Canyon Smokehouse. And that's Jacob Nelson and Erin Nelson.
I'll speak as a co-owner of Canyon Smokehouse. We currently have a beer only license, which allows us to serve 5% ABV or less. We're requesting a limited restaurant alcohol license, which would enable us to serve heavy beer as well as wine. Our permit, we have to turn in the paperwork by September 30th to be approved for the next cycle. So we are just requesting to go one up on our alcohol license. Jim?
Yeah, and this is only serving to people who are buying their food. Is that correct?
That is correct. So for the restaurant license, they have to consume on site and they have to eat at the restaurant. They must order food.
Yeah. You know, if anybody else has any questions, that's great. But otherwise I'll, I would motion to approve this.
And I would just say that for the public and anybody listening, they've been operating since March and there have been no problems with the beer that they've been serving whatsoever. So I would support that.
Is that a second, Lou?
No, somebody already seconded.
I'll change my to a second there. Jim first and I'll, I'll second.
Did you, okay, I didn't hear the second, sorry. Then all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous and I'll sign that when I come back into the office then. Probably Saturday sometime.
Thank you.
Then the next is the Twin Rocks request for an alcohol license, but they have withdrawn that request. So that's off the agenda. We'll move to report on San Juan County Commission meeting on September 5th, which was today. Jim and Linda attended.
I can, I can say what I saw. I got up there about 10 for their work meeting and just hung around. Mr. Torgerson from TLA was, was there and present, as was Hatterly, which, who I met. He's a really nice guy, seems like a really, we're really lucky to have this person. But that, the resolution that we had passed as a council was presented to the, to the commission and they had it on their agenda. I asked if I should speak to it when it came up or whether I should be a public speak, speak as a public person at the beginning. And Bruce told me I should just sign up to speak. And I just reiterated what, what I know about it is that we're trying to protect our water, that this is land that could be developed, is, is developable within bluff, which is kind of a rarity actually.
Okay, Jim just froze. I don't know, Jim, if you can hear me.
All these acre, acres wishing to go away. Anyway, they voted, they, there was quite a nice discussion by Jamie Harvey. It was very heartfelt and he actually, you know, he, he wondered about Sittler's powers a little bit in a polite, in a civil way. And he also reiterated a commitment to, I believe, it sounded like he was reiterating, reiterating a commitment to local control. And I'm all in favor of that too. But he made a motion and it was, it did not get a second. It seems that Commissioner Stubbs had thought long and hard about this. It was a difficult decision for her to make. She and I have been friends for, you know, 30 years. I've known her family and her, we worked together at one point. So I know this was difficult for her, but she disagreed and she would not second. And Commissioner Adams didn't say anything about it, but he did not second. So it died and that was the end of that. But it was a good discussion to have, I think. And, and I think it was, it was really encouraging to see Commissioner Harvey take that position. I, I thought for me and my, the way I feel about it. So that was that. Are there any questions about that? Is that pretty much it, Linda?
Yeah, I would say that Jim did a great job. He spoke in public comments. And then when they were discussing, he, he spoke to their questions and did a great job doing that. Ryan Torgerson also did a public comment and spoke at the same time when they had questions. And it was, it was really encouraging that the two new commissioners are really thinking and researching, not just the things that come to them.
Yeah, yeah, that was really nice.
My understanding is that Commissioner Stubbs stated that she'd been to bluff one time and had a very bad experience. Did anybody follow up on that? Well, first was that said and did anybody follow up with it if it was?
I did not follow up with that with Sylvia, but I, I probably will at some point. This was a difficult decision for her, but it's possible. Did she come down for the Democratic Party meeting, Linda?
Yes, she did. And I spoke to her about it in, we're, we're both on the County Economic Development Board. And she, she didn't, I don't believe she said anything specific, but it wasn't a good experience and she repeated it in this meeting. And, but she also, you know, I encouraged her that we would really like her to come and to one of our meetings, like Jamie Harvey did. So, so she is definitely interested in coming down again.
Yeah, she, she, she did state something to the effect that she didn't, she hadn't felt welcomed or acknowledged in some way. But it was her, she's, she's a sensitive person. I know that. She's a really nice person and she, she does her best, whatever she does.
So I just want to point out that I don't really know Commissioner Stubbs. I've met her a couple of times in different arenas during the election process. But I have sent an invitation to her by email to meet with her up in Monticello. I've requested that she attend one of our meetings. I've not had a response to any of my contacts. And to the best of my knowledge, whatever this bad experience is or was in bluff did not come from Commissioner Stubbs attending or meeting with any of us or any of planning and zoning. And so Jim, if you do meet with Commissioner Stubbs, would you try to narrow that down a little bit? Because I've invited her. And I do know that when Commissioner Harvey came, she had expressed an interest, according to Mac McDonald, of coming with them. And, and Mac doing his administrative duties, pointed out two of them in the same space would be a public meeting and it would have to be noticed. And so she didn't come. But after that, I'd invited her. So if you can follow up with your invitation, that might be really useful.
I will. Thank you.
Then moving to the next one, which I think is 15. Like I said, I, I've had to renumber my old one, but I think it's number 15, advertisement for bluff seat on the San Juan County Planning and Zoning Board. Again, I did not attend the commission meeting, but I had contact with Mac McDonald. He had run an ad in the San Juan record to fill a seat that we hold on San Juan County Planning and Zoning. And Mr. McDonald had, at the request of planning and zoning, decided that they needed to replace our representative, who was Dobson, with someone else due to the bylaws. So did that happen today in the commission meeting?
Yeah, it was pretty brief. Dobson has not attended and there was lots of records of that. And so they exercised the right that they have to select someone else. And they selected Ms. Riggs. Not sure of her first name, a resident in town, Dr. Riggs, who had submitted a very brief and to the point letter to them. And she is the new representative from bluff on the planning commission.
So her first name is Melissa, Melissa Riggs. And she holds a PhD, possibly two PhDs, one in business administration. Or maybe she has an MBA in business and a PhD in social work. And she's been in the community for about, I think, three years. She has a very impressive resume. But I believe that's the only person who had applied, who had seen that ad. So thank you, Dr. Riggs. All right, now if I'm following my goofy notes, it looks like we are at the other. Does anybody have other?
You have number 16, mosquito and weed removal.
Great. I don't have that in my notes, so can you read what it is? Apologies to everybody, but I'm, I haven't been by a printer and I rely on printing.
No, it just says mosquito and weed removal all. So I'm not sure what that entails.
Oh, a public announcement. With the advent of rain and Jim Hook's pretty detailed email about the puddles and mosquitoes and then the follow-up by Malia, that the, Malia Collins, that the pellets are available. And Dobson and Jim Hook commenting on the goat heads. Everybody, you know, we're in the process of amending our weed ordinance to give it more teeth, but I know people are really diligent. Can we help out the mosquito abatement? Can we help out the goat head and any other noxious removable things? Well, we've got them coming up rather than waiting and having all the volunteers out there working on your property. So it's just kind of a plea, get, get out there. And I think if you contact Ed Dobson or Jim Hook, they'll tell you where the problem areas are, where they could really use some help or where Ed could really use help. So Erin, does that get me to other? Is there any other? Sorry, everyone.
I, I have another. I just want awareness that there's a UDOT Regional Trail Workshop, October 12th up in Moab. It'll be in person with possibly a virtual option. That is where they want to know what routes are really wanted in the state of Utah to connect communities. So this is going to be a prime opportunity to get up there and let them know that, that this area along 191 through bluff is in high need. We had a meeting today. We're ready to bring the, the active transportation plan to the council. Should be looking at next week on the agenda is, is kind of what it's looking like after the meeting today. And Chris Hall from UDOT was very encouraging to have people come to that meeting in Moab to show the planning that's already been in place and the, the support for that. So I'm planning to go, hoping that somebody else will be able to, to go as well. So if anybody in the, the community or any of you, I'd really love it. I think if, and if you can spare the time, having the mayor there at the, planning would probably give us a good bump ahead in our list on UDOT's plans. But they've got money and they're going to do somebody's trail. So hoping that that becomes ours.
And what day, what was the date, Lou?
It's October 12th. So it's the day before the onslaught of the eclipse up in Moab. I can go with the van and it's just from 1:00 to 3:00. So it's just a couple of hours, of course, a couple of hours up there and then a couple of hours back.
I'll try. Let's talk about that and figure out what the schedules look like.
Okay. Let's see, there was something else. No, I guess that was it. But, but Bike Utah was on our AT. But Bike Utah was on our ATA committee meeting today with their, their draft and it is very near completion. Just one, a couple more little edits on the map and we'll be ready to present it. It's a question, one question is that they're looking at is whether or not we'll need a public hearing or if we can just approve the, the plan through council. But we should, hoping to get that through council this month.
Anything further from anyone?
Erin has her hand raised.
Yep. Erin?
Two. First, just so folks know, I know we talked about that aviation ordinance draft. It is going to be put under the Resident Resources tab. So that's where I put all the items of like major importance that are mentioned during a meeting. So that's under Resident Resources, which is a tab up at the top. And then second, I don't know if this was like on the agenda, didn't have an item number, but Ann, it says discussion and vote to revise fire restrictions? And I don't know if that got moved to another meeting.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you. That's what happens when I can't print out the final one and I rely on my notes. So I don't know if folks are ready to do something with our fire restrictions. Right now we have fire restrictions, no open fires, no chainsaws, no welding. And I'm not sitting there right now. I don't know how dry people feel like it is, but I've had some calls from one person asking about being able to take down a tree with a professional tree remover with a chainsaw, someone who didn't know there was a restriction and they were appropriately burning, but the restriction was in place. So do we want to leave it in place for another week? Do we want to take a look at it? Are you ready to lift it?
All that activity has been occurring with that going on, Mayor. So my thought is that we should leave it in place for another week and then get it off at the end of this month.
I would agree with that. It's that we haven't gotten enough rain to change anything and we're still getting wind and whatnot. The temperatures are cooling down, but not, not enough to change it, in my opinion.
I'm fine with leaving it as it is. Revisiting it later in the month.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It is 7:15. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody. Good work.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thanks.
Thank you.